I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for June 21, 2006, and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of the commission are present except for Mr. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on May 17, 2006. I'll entertain any request for changes. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the April 19, uh, May 17, 2006 meeting.
So I move this to Chair to approve May 17, Commission meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Gelsner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. If you have not, I would invite you to complete a speaker card if you would like to speak on any of the items on the agenda tonight. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. If you are unsure and after discussion you have questions or comments, that certainly doesn't preclude you from speaking if you haven't submitted a card. I will call those that have submitted cards first and then offer an opportunity for anyone else to speak on the appropriate agenda item. If you want to fill out a card and provide it to the Secretary for the Commission, you're welcome to do so. Is there anyone that has disclosure of ex parte communications? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And there's one item on the consent agenda, case 05-300-00010, Panda Express Drive-Thru Restaurant Use Permit. And the recommendation is that the staff would like to have that continued to our July 19, 2006 Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone that would like to have that removed from the consent agenda and considered as a, an active item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move, Mr. Chair, to approve the consent agenda. The item continue to the July 19, 2006 Commission meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second for Ms. Laura Tunnell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First case under new business, case 05-500-00020, Palm Valley Perimeter West One, Phase Six Preliminary Plat. A request for the approval of the preliminary plat for Palm Valley Perimeter West One, Phase Six subdividing approximately 248 acres into 38 industrial general commercial lots generally located at the southeast corner of Camelback Road and Cotton Lane within Phase Six of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development. The applicant is SunCorps Development Company. I ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you Chairman Horseman, members of the commission. As was mentioned, the Perimeter West Preliminary Plat is approximately 252 acres. It's generally located east of Cotton Lane, west of the Loop 303, north of Indian School, and south of Camelback Road. This aerial exhibit shows that land uses surrounding the property, Camelback Road and undeveloped ag zoned land to the north, Indian School Road and undeveloped ag land to the south, the 303 freeway and undeveloped agricultural zoned land to the east, and Cotton Lane and a strip of light industrial zoned land running north and south. The area here contains a small number of businesses that's zoned I-1 to the west. The, moving on to the, perimeter west proposes to subdivide the 252 acres into 38 lots and six tracts. The land use includes 202 acres of light industrial property, approximately 10 acres of commercial, shown in red, and approximately 11 acres zoned public facilities district, shown in yellow, which will be home to a future APS substation. SunCorps has reported that due to interest in the property by both potential users and the brokerage community timing to move this property forward to development is favorable. SunCorps has also indicated that they plan to construct a 500,000 square foot build, industrial building in this subdivision after obtaining city approvals. A copy of the preliminary plat was sent to Luke Air Force Base for comment, and Luke Air Force Base reported that they will accept the preliminary plat as submitted. The PAD in the preliminary plat contains stipulations requiring Luke Air Force Base to have an opportunity to provide written comments on all industrial land uses prior to the issuance of any building permit in the subdivision. And the stipulations that are included in your staff report, the majority of those are carried over from the final PAD or the rezoning for the property. Overall, the preliminary plat is consistent with the Palm Valley Master Plan and the City of Goodyear General Plan. This concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Jay Ellingson with SunCorps Development is also available, and I believe he has some things that he would like to talk to you about tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellingson.
Chairman, members of the commission, Jay Ellingson, SunCorps Development, 14130 West McDowell Road, Goodyear. It's good to be before you tonight. It's been awhile.
Good to see you.
This is a project that we've been working on for some time. Any of you are familiar with it? From the standpoint of impacted acreage that's within the Luke influence, particularly in APZ Two of the majority of this. We've worked closely with Luke Air Force Base before we bring it to staff and before we bring it to you in a concept that would be harmonious with Luke and their mission. We have even taken it a step further, as Brett has mentioned, that each individual building, as we bring it forward, will also be reviewed by Luke in terms of compatibility. The aim of this is to utilize the property. It's very hard in terms of the limitations, but we think that we've worked in the framework of state statute, Goodyear policy, Air Force policy to bring this project forward. Brett mentioned that the building that we're hoping to build is 500,000 square feet. It's probably more in the nature of probably 430 or 450 when we start looking at the actual configuration that we can get on the individual parcels. The first building that we're looking at is on these four lots when it comes back in the final plat to counsel, that, those four lots will probably be one lot for that first building. It'll be a cross dock industrial distribution building. That means you bring product in one side, break it down, or assemble it, take it out the other side. It's a use that makes a lot of sense in terms of the types of people that we see coming forward to the valley for commerce with all of the product being brought to Arizona from the docks in California. It's easier to break it down, distribute it, pass it through in buildings like this. The only other comment I have in terms of stipulations is that we agree with them all, but I, just to be on the record, a lot of times when we talk about the roads that surround our, or the responsibility of development, most of the time it's under the direction and engineering standards for the City of Goodyear. Camelback Road is not so defined. It's a county road. And so when we go through that process, we just want to make everyone aware, the people that we get the permit from roll the game. And so in that particular case, as we have to do with our Phase Nine project and also on Phase Five in terms of Camelback Road, that's built to county standards, just to let you know, we really don't have a choice in that matter because that's where the permit is issued. So I, I'm here if there are any other questions?
Questions of staff or Mr. Ellingson?
Mr. Chair, I have one question. I appreciate your comment on Camelback Road. On lots in the commercial, 29 and 28, will they be, they're in the upper left-hand corner. Will they be accessed off of Cotton? It looks like there's, there's not access off of Camelback to 29 and 28.
Access is going to be an interesting challenge, but on most of those, the access will come in from the Colosseum Street to the south. There will be limited access. They may have access on Cotton Lane. You're right. We haven't done any site plans. We don't have any other considerations, but remember, under, under, or adjacent to Cotton Lane on the east side is a 75-foot easement for the, you know, 230 power line that goes. So we can't build adjacent to Cotton Lane. It's got to be set back to the east by at least 75 feet.
Okay. And would that be the same true for down below in Lot Six, which isn't up against Montecito, but, or, you know, or Section Six? That would be just north of the, the energy parcel, the pinnacle of that energy.
Saying this one?
No, it would be down below Jay. Keep going down, left, down, 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 there.
Stop. Too far.
Above.
One more.
Right there.
I can see that. Yeah, six.
I think it's five.
There, there will, there probably could be a right end for that particular, I think the way we've laid it out, I think there is a right turn lane into that, or driveway before you get to West Montecito. But this is, as you mentioned, this will be, as I mentioned, this will be one lot when it comes back in.
Ah, okay. All right. Thank you. That answered it. Other questions of staff, the sons, staff or Ms. Ellingson?
Two questions. One would be exciting, but I have a feeling I know the answer. You have a college drive. Does that mean that there's maybe a college? Or is that really just a college drive? It's actually the street?
It's a good question. We don't get to name the roads.
No, darn.
They're kind of in alignment on the master grid, and so they're assigned.
I figured.
I don't know where the college is that align to that road, so.
Okay. The other question actually pertains to stipulation number six regarding having bike lanes on Loop 303. Can you help me out with that a little bit? Because that really, what I envisioned is scary.
It's, I think it's just the way it's, it's written. There are no bike lanes on Loop 303.
Just the way it's, okay.
What, what that's really talking about is, is that, I'm not sure why they put it in that way. And the 303. Got to pedal really fast.
Yeah.
It, it probably needs some work.
To revision there, okay. That was, that was.
But I will tell you that as you bring up the bike lanes, we're still trying to think if it's appropriate to have bike lanes in industrial, particularly with the big semis being there. We're trying to work through that by the final plat with staff. It's a, it's a design standard, but it may at least be considered that it may not be appropriate, especially on all of the subsequent roads. You may be able to make an argument for this, although I wouldn't personally support it. But certainly some of the other roads, I don't know why you would have bike lanes there, so.
Other questions of staff or Mr. Ellingson?
Chair, Lucy. Jay, thank you for being here. It's good to see you again. I want to know that I'm really excited about seeing some industrial projects coming in to Goodyear that needs more jobs, and I think that's just a positive thing. Thank you so much for negotiating that and bringing that forward. The only question I have is that this site is abutting up to the 202, and I guess I have a question about whether you perceive that there may be pylon signs or anything like that that may be required for this plat?
It's a good question. We will, we will come forward with a comprehensive sign package in relationship to this, but the types of buildings, not everyone here would be interested. I think the question should be also what kind of signage would be on the buildings that have such large faces potentially on the 303. And I think that question legitimately should be answered.
Okay.
One of the things, you have to understand that in the normal circumstance, you would certainly want them if this was more commercially or retail directed in terms of the uses. A lot of these people, it's not as important to get their name recognized, but on the other hand, there may be some uses that may fall within the scope of the mission of Luke that may desire their name recognition. One of the, one of the interesting challenges that we have is, is that with the limited uses on this property, you know, and, and what this property could be if, if it didn't have an impact with the Air Force Base are far, far different, so. But it's a good question, and we will try to answer that in a comprehensive sign package.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ellingson. I don't have an interest card, but is there anyone here that would like to speak on this agenda item? This is not part of a public hearing, so the next item on our agenda, if you will, is a commission action regarding case 05-500-00020. I will entertain a motion regarding this case. Ms. Laura Tunnell?
I move that we approve 05-500-00020 with the stipulations set forth in the patent.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Bay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ellingson. Our next case is case 06-200-000006, Pradera rezoning. Request for the approval to rezone 160.40 acres generally located in the northwest corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road from Agricultural Urban, AU District to the Planned Area Development, PAD District. The applicant is Gary Myers of Standard Pacific Homes, Inc. I'll open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, as stated, the Pradera development is 160.4 acres generally located in the rest of Goodyear development area. And I'll just direct your attention to the map here, my just, foot orientation, now it fits in with development, or projects that we've already seen before the commission. The north here is Amber Meadows, La Pravada, which I believe y'all saw at the last meeting. Lostman Thomas here, the Paso Rio Ridge, and then the Pradera development right here. Lower Buckeye running east and west here, proposed Durango alignment here. This is Citrus Road, and this is 183rd Avenue. The applicant is requesting a recommendation for approval for the final plat, I'm sorry, for the final planned area development and the preliminary plat before you this evening. The general plan designates this area as low-density residential, which is two to four units per acre. The applicant is a participating member of the MOU this evening, and the Pradera development Pradera is proposing a total of 471 single-family residential lots, 357 of those are the standard lining with 114 court homes. Proposed lot sizes are 60 by 125 and 75 by 130 on the conventional lot size, being court homes roughly the 2,300 square foot in size. The Pradera, the Pradera development is proposing just under 26 percent, or I'm sorry, 27 percent of open space in this development. You'll notice that nine and a half acres of it right in the center, the development centers around the community park that's located with equal access to everyone. I would also direct your attention to the multi-use regional trail located in the drainage channel, and that may be familiar with you all. We saw it in the La Pradera, I'm sorry, the La Pravada, as well as the Paso Rio Ridge and Amber Meadows developments as well. I'd also point out that they have free space and open, park and open space at all four corners of the development. Amenities proposed within this are ball fields, shaded Ramadas, barbecue, as well as other additional amenities. Access to the development. Let me go back to it. This exhibit. As we said earlier, four entrances into the development, one located at 183rd, another at the Durango Street alignment, the Citrus Road entrance located here, and the Lower Buckeye entrance located there. There were two citizen review meetings held regarding this development. First meeting proposed, exposed a clear desire by the county residents to the north to, with objection to the Durango Street alignment. We took those concerns, we went back to Chief Galler, Chief Brown, engineering, and came to same conclusion that, that the extension of Durango Road was, was critical to the circulation needs of not only the city, but the residents and the, and the developing projects in that area. One of the other big issues with, with this road going through was Castillo Lane. The light's kind of shining out, someone move this down a little bit, but Castillo Lane, I believe, starts right here and runs this direction, and many of the county residents are, this is the access to their homes for them. So subsequent conversations with RID, which this is an operations and maintenance road for the Roosevelt Irrigation District, produced a willingness on, on RIDs and an acceptance to putting a gate there and eliminating any type of traffic from the Durango Road alignment up through Castillo Lane to Umar Road. And that would be roughly located in this general vicinity right here as well. As I said, we had the second meeting with the, with the, with the residents and were able to come up with the Castillo Lane solution. Staff is recommending approval of final planned area development this evening as well as the preliminary plat, based on the stipulations that you have in front of you this evening. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation this evening. Mr. Myers is here, and I believe he would like to address the commission, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Let's hear from Mr. Myers, and then we can have.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask staff a question?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Williams, could you put the, the map that you showed us of Castillo Lane back up on the overhead? Yeah, that was that. As, if I understand this correctly, the RID can, the RID people are amenable to putting a gate at the south end of Castillo Lane, and so all of the access would come from the north, from Umar Road. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gelsner, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Laura Tunnell?
I just have a brief question for staff. I might have missed this, but I noticed there was going to be a donation to the school. Is the school site envisioned to be used, one of the ones that we were talking about earlier, and one of the other developments then?
Mr. Chairman, the, there is a school site in the Amber Meadows between La Pravada and, I'll go back to this one, and tell you that there is a, there's a joint donation between these two developments to put a school site right there. As to whether the children in this neighborhood would actually attend that specific school, I, I can't answer that.
I just wondered, because there was no school site in this development. I remember that one from before. If that was large enough to accommodate then these children as well? Because I didn't see a place to put it in this development.
That is correct. There is no school site associated with this.
There is another school site in La Jolla Vista, which is just to the east of, let me show, let me show La Jolla Vista, it's just to the.
La Jolla Vista.
Okay.
In that area, there's a school site in that location.
So there's a couple. That's just one, they're nearby.
It's, it's fairly close.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Myers?
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Gary Myers. I'm with Standard Pacific Homes, 6710 North Scottsdale Road. We went through all the stipulations. Staff has worked really hard with us to minimize them to pretty much the, your basic core stipulations that you usually see, and we worked a long time on this, probably 17 variations of floor plan or land plans and so forth, and I, I think we've arrived at something that's, that ended up being a pretty good development for the City of Goodyear and, and for us as a home builder, not just a developer, where these are actually going to be our homeowners as well. One thing that didn't come through in the PAD, I hope you've all had a chance to look through it a little bit, we spent a lot of time on it. One thing that maybe didn't get conveyed completely, and I've noticed in recent city council meetings, especially with the Vice Mayor, some concerns about some of the court home development. I brought some additional exhibits and so forth that I want you to feel free to look through. If you have any questions on any of that, I'd be glad to answer anything that you have. I'm going to try to set these up real quick.
Sure.
A lot of times the stuff doesn't get conveyed very well in black and white in these.
I think you're going to want to move them closer to the podium so they get on TV.
All right.
Or on the internet. Straight, so they're up there.
This is, this is an illustrative layout. Basically, these, these units live with a central green court, and all the garages back off of motorhomes. But I know you've seen some of this product in the past. I just, I wasn't happy with some of the illustrations that we had, so I wanted to kind of get that in front of you and answer any questions you might have. Also have a, kind of a, a green court perspective of what this looks like from the street. Having only developed some of this product for the Gilbert area, we're still in the ground, and this is the same thing we did to the City of Gilbert, so we don't have any pictures of any actual product that we've done yet, but this is the concept, and this is the field that we're, we're trying to achieve, just in the court home area of it. but this is the concept and this is the feel that we're trying to achieve, just in the court home area of it, so. You know, the court homes served as an adequate buffer for us with some proposed commercial in the southeast and southwest corners of Lower Buckeye and Citrus. It gave us an intensity of use. These two areas here, Padera's up here, these two commercial areas. And then also court homes proposed just in the east at the La Jolla Vista property. It gave us an intensity of use pattern to go through our smaller court homes into our 60 by 125 lots and then eventually into our 75 by 130s. We felt that that was a good pattern and everyone still had adequate access to our nine and a half acre Central Park area. I guess with that, I'll quit rambling and answer any questions you might have.
I want to commend you, this is probably one of the nicest packages in terms of the graphics and so forth and the elevations that we've seen in quite a while. And realize it's not a small task to do that, especially when you have a moving target and working with staff and I want to commend you on the, on the package itself. It really gave us plenty of opportunity to see what it is that you're proposing instead of some of the placeholder kind of graphics that we've been receiving in the not-too-distant past. That's aimed at somebody else, so.
I certainly appreciate that.
Questions of staff or the applicant, Mr. Gelsner?
Question for the applicant. I have two quick questions. The rendering, the first rendering that you put up, you have what looks to be like a brick patterned driveways for each individual house or court home. Are they, is that going to be brick or is that going to be poured concrete with a pattern in it?
Those are, those are actually just, they represent what's each homeowner's individual personal space, those would be their patios.
Okay.
It's probably a way to differentiate.
Okay, okay.
Everything is HOA maintained, it's kind of a lifestyle choice for court home buyers, they don't want to maintain yard and so forth. So the greenscape is HOA maintained as well as the motorports.
Okay, so these are, these are interior patios?
Yes.
That is basically a concrete slab or something?
Absolutely, and it's just, and bricks are-
That's fine, okay. Then the next question I have is, is there any kind of phasing that's planned? You know, like, you know, what, I mean, which direction are you, I mean, are you going to dig all your arterials? Is this going to come in phasers, is this going to, all the infrastructure is going in one shot and then we're going to start building houses?
Yeah, we would, at 160 acres, we're comfortable that we could come in and mass grade the site and with basically three, three separate penetrations as far as lot types and sizes, we hit different economic, different economic areas. We're hopefully going to be able to get some first-time home buyers in here as well because frankly, land prices have gone out of the way, but we would end up, starting from the two central areas where the highest traffic areas would be the Citrus exit entrance and also the Lower Buckeye entrance. So that quadrant down there would be the beginning and we would probably work our way out. But no true phasing as far as-
Okay. Do you have price points that you're shooting for in the different, you know, or price range on the different types of homes?
Well, unfortunately with the sagging market, we're trying to expand our horizons and hit as many points as we can.
The reason I asked for, the reason I asked this is because city council gets all bent out of shape if they think the housing is too cheap.
Ah, well.
So I'm just, so I'm, so I'm, you know, I guess I'm prompting you with a question. If you don't have an answer for me, have one when you get to present that council.
Mr. Gelsner, we've had our, we've saw our median house prices go from two and a quarter to 335. That's our median house prices, we have plenty of homes in the 600,000 range and quite frankly, there's going to be 4,200 square foot homes on this site, on the 75 by 130 lots.
I just, you know, as a regular counsel, I just want to advise you that there will be questions on your price points, especially on the court homes and, you know, some of the, what you can, what may be your entry-level housing and I think you need to be prepared to answer that when, when you make your presentation.
Sadly, you know, affordability is a relative term now and I don't project us having anything south of $225,000.
That's what they want to hear.
Okay.
Thought I-
Other questions? Mr. Laura Tymon?
Mrs. Laura Tymon?
Yeah?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Osborn?
Sir, track A, looks like it's the open space right by Durango Street. Is that turf or is that going to be granite?
Majority of, almost everything you see green on the landscape plan is going to be serviceable. There are a lot of challenges present with some of the drainage and retention requirements. We have more than met our requirements as far as high and dry open space and in a total open space allocation, we're at 20, we're north of 26 percent when we're required 12, so we've doubled that open space requirement. But some, you know, a lot of the areas that are retention will be hydro-seated and we'll try to maintain some turf areas and are you referring to the one on Lower Buckeye and 183rd?
No, off of Durango, there's a big-
Durango and 183rd.
It's said track A is what it is.
I'm sorry, I'm scrambling to get around there.
It's right up here, this one.
This right there.
Yeah, there'd be some type of entry vegetation, so there'll be some landscaping in there.
Okay.
Absolutely, anything available from entry point, we'll have visual- Trees and other vegetation that, you know, and if you, if you go through here, you'll see some of the theming that we have. There'd be a lot of native grasses and, I mean, that's kind of the theme that we went through with the-
Well, my issue was, I like to see parks and things equally distributed through the community and it feels like that corner area is lacking a little bit and so that's why I'm trying to figure out what is close for the children.
One of the challenges we had with this development, as you guys know from the drainage channel that comes down 183rd Avenue. I also have a Roosevelt Irrigation District channel that I'm, I don't know that the farmers to the south of us will be, I don't know if that area will have developed by the time we go to develop the site, so I had to underground pipe the, the channel through that, right down through the middle of the site. So that created somewhat of a division and there are some areas that, that didn't make it as readily, because of, you know, even from a elevation standpoint, this, the wind canal area is really a lot higher than the rest of the site. So we've tried to use that as an amenity and tiered the park. So we have like, I think there's 14 feet of elevation drop from the top lookout area, the Ramada and so forth, and then a tier for play area and then further down, some of the sport court activity stuff. So we tried to use that as a benefit, but at the same time, it didn't allow us to spread out, you know, with our extensive trail system, hopefully makes everything readily available for people as well. We're hoping that would be the benefit instead of kind of a negative in that area.
Speaking of entrance, what are your, could you elaborate on your plans for Durango Street? I understand you're responsible for the half-street improvements and the entrance on Durango Street?
Yeah, the entrance on Durango Street is much more subdued than our ones off of Citrus or Lower Buckeye, just from an anticipated arterial usage. We don't, we have entry monumentation at the Lower Buckeye and Citrus areas and they're also within your booklets. There would be minimal monumentation and it would be de-emphasized as far as the development's concerned, but, you know, from public safety access and so forth, those areas make sense from a circulation standpoint and a traffic report.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant or staff? Thank you very much. There may be some questions that we want to give you an opportunity to respond to after we have some speakers and, Chief?
Thank you.
Like to, if you'd like to speak now, that'd be great, but if you'd like to respond to any questions on the back end, that's fine too.
Chairman, whatever your pleasure is. Any questions about-
Why don't you come up and talk about Durango and the access, please?
Yes, sir.
Get that out of the way or onto the table.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I understand there's some concern about the extension of, the improvement of Durango Street. Came to our attention after the first public meeting. Staff came and asked us about our, our perspective from a public safety standpoint on the improvement of Durango. Having, having actually been a reviewer of the submittal with the assumption that that road would take place, we revisited the zoning request and took a look at it from a fire, rescue EMS perspective. Is it a road of significance? Consulted with the police department, police chief specifically and both compared that it clearly was. We have seen development already come, adjacent development in this particular case to the, to the north and to the west. And quite honestly, it's been problematic with respect to our ability to quickly move apparatus, emergency equipment through the area. Always we have made the assumption that Durango would be improved and would be a part of our ability to respond to not only the subject development this evening, but others that have already come through and been acted upon by this body. The, I have, I have additional information regarding station planning that I could also provide for you. However, it's a half-mile road. It is a significant road with respect to our ability to serve the community that is, has already been authorized and is coming up out of ground, including this one. And so we, we feel it is a real important part and in fact have already made the assumptions with respect to previous development that's been authorized, that it would be improved. If you have any specific questions, I'd like to address those now or perhaps after-
Any questions for Chief Geller? Thank you, Chief. Okay, I do have one card, Mr. Art West.
Chairman Horchman and commissioners, thank you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of addressing you this evening. I'd like to take just a minute of your time and explain to you the uniqueness of this property here that's adjacent to the development. Right here. Yeah, I'm not real sure, try to zoom in. Okay, and, this is, this is right in here, okay. Right here at Citrus and Durango, we have basically four lots. Our four people that own this property in here. It's the Espinoses that have been right where my finger's at, they've got an acre there, they've been there since the early 70s, since 74. The Castilles, who are up this line here, along the RID canal which we talked about, they've been there since 74. The Robinsons, who live up in here, have been there since the 64s, since 1964. And we purchased our place in 1980. So basically you have four homeowners, families that live in there and then it's the kids and brothers and sisters and grandchildren that live in that area. Our concerns over the smaller lot sizes, we addressed before, before we had our first meeting with, with Standard Pacific Homes. We spoke to Mr. Coons, Mr. Coons got with Standard Pacific Homes and they changed the lot size here to the, this lot size here to being the larger lot size. Originally, when they first proposed the subdivision, that was going to be the law, a smaller 60-foot lots width and now they've gone to the 75, they've gone to the larger lot sizes. In our first neighborhood meeting, we had over 18 people in attendance with a petition. We gave, gave the city of 35 names and what we asked for was we asked for our community and our lifestyle not to be impacted any more than absolutely necessary by the Padera community that was going in. We did ask for an additional two feet to the perimeter fence, making it eight foot tall on the north side of this property here, from Citrus to about halfway down here where the other side of Castillo Lane, where the end of the Castillo's property is at. And that was agreed to by Standard Pacific. We asked for the northern entrance, we asked for Durango not to be there, which the chief had spoke about. We wanted the community to come in, into their property off of Citrus, on the north end of their property, right in through here, instead of having Durango. And after the chief, we met with the deputy of the fire department and Mr. Williams, they made it real clear that they needed Durango in. And so, you know, we, we had different alternatives, we, we said, well, you could, they said that the response time is why they needed it. I really couldn't see why they couldn't make the response time off of Citrus. They said the roads wouldn't wide enough. Well, they could make the road wider because it'd be gaining this other road, but they decided they wanted Durango in. So then we asked them if they would turn these homes around and back these homes up to these homes and so the perimeter fence would be on the north side of what would be proposed as Durango. In our meeting on the 13th, we had 20 people from the neighborhood and, we had 20 people from our neighborhood. And it was made very clear that they wanted Durango in. And they really, we brought up this situation about the Castillo Lane and the traffic would be coming off of Castillo Lane. And it was made real clear that that was basically a county island and that it was not part of the property of Standard Pacific and so there wasn't a lot they could do about that. The next morning, on Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM, Mr. Castillo and I met with Stan Ashby, superintendent of the Roosevelt Irrigation District, at lateral eight and the proposed alignment of Durango. Mr. Ashby stated that he was not aware of the details concerning the installation of Durango, but during our conversations, Mr. Ashby expressed his concerns over the additional liability this would be placing on the, the traffic, on the RID, people driving up and down. In addition, he was concerned about the magnet and open ditch of water. It draws kids, really draws kids out of a community. During a discussion last Thursday afternoon between the City of Goodyear, Standard Pacific Homes, Roosevelt Irrigation District, an agreement was made for Standard Pacific to install a gate, like how Mr. Williams said, and on the RID road just north of the proposed Durango alignment. Stop traffic from using the RID road as an alternate going up to Yuma Road. What we're asking for is, we understand that they want to put Durango in and we understand that's progress. We are, we are asking that our lifestyle not be changed any more than it has to be. The Espinoses property, which is right here where my finger, their home will be probably 20 to 25 feet from the edge of Durango. My home down here will be 20, 25 feet from the edge of Durango. This is all open, I've got farmland in here, I've got cattle and I've got horses, I've got a rope and rein in here. I would really like to be able to keep the people off of my property and the liability that's going to be created by people climbing my fences, getting into my corrals, getting in with my animals. What we're asking, and what we're asking is to put a block wall on the north side of the new Durango alignment, but on Standard Pacific's home, property, and go from Citrus to the west side of, you see the RID ditch coming down through here, Castillo, the Castillo property is probably 20 or 30 foot west of that. If you would take the wall clear to that, that would limit the access of people being able to get in to our homes and our properties and moving up, up to the north here, where these four basically form.
Can I stop you right here?
Yes, sir.
Just let me make a comment. This is not the first new development to come into this area and interface with county islands.
Yes, sir.
There have been a whole broad range of concerns in previous projects about some of the things that you're mentioning here. To the best of my knowledge, none of those negative things such as people climbing your barbed wire fence, it gets a little, little difficult and getting in with your animals, has not occurred in any of the other county islands that I'm aware of. So I'm certainly want to try to mitigate reasonably. I, I think we might be amenable to encouraging Standard Pacific to look at- I, I think we might be amenable to encouraging Standard Pacific to look at assisting you the, a couple of issues. One is that the center line of Durango is county.
Yes, sir.
Not City of Goodyear, not Standard Pacific. Putting a wall on private property that doesn't belong to Standard Pacific is also going to be an issue. I would think that there might be some discussion maybe between now and the time that the City Council takes this up regarding what might be done. It's probably not something that we're going to be able to nail down tonight because there are players who are not represented here and some engineering issues. Max Wilson may have a whole different view of the, what the other half of Durango Street is going to look like. He's the county supervisor. So I, I think we can and appreciate the constructive contribution and idea that maybe we can do something in that arena, but there are other players involved that may make it difficult to come to any resolution this evening. But I certainly appreciate you putting that on the table. Whether we do it in half, in, in part, certain areas, that, that remains to be seen.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. West, if I understand correctly, the north side of the development is going to have an eight-foot wall be from, from basically running along the south, the south, the south side of Durango Street all the way to one hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue, which is where the RID canal and your, the corner of your property.
Sir, no, that's not quite true. One hundred and eighty-third is over here where my finger's at now.
I'm sorry, one hundred and eighty-first.
Okay.
So, so there, so the back wall for all of the houses along Durango is going to be an eight-foot wall instead of a six-foot wall. That, that was presented, I think you even presented that.
Yes, sir.
And, and so are you asking for another wall on the other side of Durango that, so that Durango becomes a canyon? Is that what you're asking us for?
What we've asked for all along is not to be impacted by the people that's going to be moving into this community, sir. Basically, they're talking four hundred and sixty-nine homes, they're talking over fifteen hundred people. Where my finger is here, there's going to be an entrance into this subdivision, and that's where people will be coming out. And I appreciate, sir, I appreciate your comments, I really do. I, I, you know, we own this property in here. This is not, has not been deeded to the county for Durango. We have never deeded that property away to Durango. This is private property and it's on private property on both sides. When Standard Pacific bought this property, they bought up here to the property line and then they're going to put in the Durango and then get that over to the city or get it to whoever they get it to. But right now, they own that property, so it wouldn't be going on anybody else's property, it'd be going on theirs. And I do appreciate your comments, sir, about people going into my area and going into my pens and stuff like that. I did live probably twenty-five years of my life over in Phoenix, over on Forty-Eighth Street, McDowell, and we did have people, we had a lot of people coming in. You're also going to have people going up this ditch bank road, getting up and getting into people's homes and getting in and looking and looking around. What we're asking for, and all we're asking for, is, like I said earlier, a, a block wall put in there. And if I could finish right quick and then I'll get out of your hair.
Sure, sure. I apologize for interrupting.
No, not a problem. And then I'll answer any questions you want. In discussions with Stan Ashby, RID, this morning, he agreed that City of Goodyear and Standard Pacific Homes stated last week that they would place a gate that couldn't be accessed by vehicle traffic or foot traffic up on the RID Canal Road, the lateral eight ditch bank road. In addition, Mr. Ashby stated that along, a wall along the north side of Durango from Citrus to the west side of the Castillo property would help eliminate the access to the open ditch of water, therefore keeping children from playing in the irrigation ditch, which is lateral eight. What is out of sight is out of mind. Mr. Ashby also reinstated his concerns about the liability being created for RID with this new community and the liability of the children playing in the lateral eight water. Now, this lateral eight will have water in it and what they're going to do, right now, you've got turnouts going both ways here. So what they're going to do is they're going to put an underground pipe from there down, but this will be open. And with this road coming out, this is a perfect place for kids to go play in and play in the water in the summer, and you know how they do that. Water is just a magnet. If the, if the block wall was put in, like we were asking, first of all, this house here, like I said earlier, they're about twenty, twenty-five feet from Durango. My place is about twenty, twenty-five feet from Durango and I'm going to have an entrance basically coming right out into my house, coming out of this property line. On the west side of this RID ditch, there's about thirty to forty feet, and then there's another ditch, which is the backside of this development here. So if you put a block wall in there, like Mr. Ashby said, and I agreed with him, that if you put a block wall in there, then you're not going to have the number of people, certainly you're not going to have any bicycles, and you're going to have, limit the number of people walking back across this, this property here, which will have a fence on it, the Castillo property, and back into not only my place, but the Castillo's property. What we're trying to do is limit the traffic of people on our properties that don't have any reason to be on our properties. And that's all we're asking. We understand that there's progress, we understand that the Fire Chief and the police have decided that they need Durango, and we're not here to fight that. You know, we don't necessarily agree, we're not here to fight that. But we would like for you to please take into consideration that it is a unique piece of property. Basically, four families live here. We've lived here, some of us since the sixties, I've been there since the eighties, and it's a unique piece of property, and we like to keep our lifestyles the way it is now. So anything you could do to help us, we sure appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
I appreciate you being here.
Oh, one other thing, sir.
Excuse me.
One other thing, and I apologize. On this piece of property, right where my finger is, where the Espinoses property is there?
Yes.
There's a tailwater ditch that runs there, and it runs from this line here over to Citrus. Now, that tailwater ditch will handle up to two hundred inches of water. It's what we irrigate this field with and also it takes a runoff from this, these fields when it rains. So very important this tailwater ditch gets put in underground and it be sized correctly. And I brought that up a couple of times. I am not sure that anybody's, you know, taken it to heed, but it's very important this tailwater ditch gets in here because we irrigate these fields here and we have to have a place for the water to go, and it has to be sized correctly. And also when it rains, the water goes down through there. So it's very important. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, would the applicant like to? We're, we're not asking you to, to bind yourself, but?
I understand.
It would, it would be very helpful if you could talk a little bit about your willingness to at least discuss the, the wall as proposed.
Once again, Gary Myers, Standard Pacific Homes. You know, we've, we felt the need to have an additional neighborhood meeting. We knew, I think, after determining with public safety, we really needed to have it happening for the general circulation and eventual growth of the City of Goodyear and, you know, creating sustainable, viable communities, which is part of the general plan and everything we build off of. You know, we came back and we understand the Castillo's concerns. I mean, they've lived there a long time and they don't want people coming up and down that road, and we understand that, and we were prepared to pay to put in a gate that would keep people from accessing it from Durango. You know, there are a couple of concerns we have, I guess as a publicly traded company, we open ourselves up to a lot of liability for constructing anything, whether it's considered an improvement or not, on adjacent property or someone else's property. And it sets a precedent that, you know, we can do something like a gate, but as soon as we start putting in walls and other things, I think we create a corridor effect down Durango. I think there's other nuisances that, that. But same time, I mean, these, these people need to be comfortable and I understand their concerns, and we have, we have tried to work with them in these areas. I think at this point, the, the gate is, is the limit of Standard Pacific's interest in, in helping them achieve this privacy that they're looking for. So that's kind of our position at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the, from the Commission?
I have a comment. I'd like to commend Standard Pacific for even considering putting a gate on, on public property that does, that is not theirs. I think you're going above and beyond what's required, and I, I commend you for even considering that. If you put some gates out, if you, if you help, if you assist the people who live to the north of your development by putting, you know, a gate in on their, on the property, I think you've done more than their share. If they want a wall, I believe that it can be easily constructed and, and it's their responsibility, just like I built a wall on my property. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Laura Tannen?
I just wanted to tell the, tell the gentleman that spoke before, because his houses are around there, I do, I do understand your concerns. Goodyear is changing, but yet we do have to make it safe and make sure there's fire and police access, not just to this development, to go through this, but to the other developments that are, that are going to be further planned out if there's an emergency situation. And I do agree with the other Commissioner that you might want to wait to see what the effect is on your land before you decide to build a private wall yourself. And with regard to Standard Pacific, I do like your development. I think it's very nice, and I do like the fact you did include three different lot sizes, including core homes, so we can maintain a diverse population in Goodyear, so thank you.
Other questions or comments? Last call for anyone else that would like to speak. Mr. West?
Chairman Horstman and Commissioners, I just wanted to say one thing, that is on, would be on their property, not on our property. The fence that they're putting, putting up on the RID ditch would be at their property line there, on the north side of Durango, that is still their property. And basically, all you're talking on a block wall is like thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's all you're talking. And you're talking basically four families that have lived there since the sixties. All we're asking is to help us keep our community like it is, our existing community, and we're all for our growth, we're all for helping the fire and the Police Department to get where they need to go in a time and matter. But at the same time, look out for your, your existing families that have been around. You know, these projects come, these projects go. Standard Pacific was talking about it's going to be first-time home buyers, is hoping to get some of that in there. Well, you know, they're going to change hands with at least three times in ten years. A lot of them will, a lot of them won't stay a long time. It's going to create a lot of kids, a lot of kids in that area, and a lot of people in that area. And they do go up into neighborhoods, they go into areas, they do get out of the community that they're basically surrounded for, surrounded by, and the play areas that they have, they do get out with their bicycles and do get out and walk, and they do go look and see animals and stuff like that. And so it is a real, it is a real thing, and we're all concerned about, all of the members, all of the families, and they're represented here tonight, that have been here, been here for that amount of time, are very concerned about their lifestyle and how it's going to be changing. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers, I'll close the public hearing and ask for Commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve case zero-six-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-six, Padera rezoning with the stipulations as presented by the staff.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Gubropper. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The companion to this case is the preliminary plat, case zero-six-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-five, Padera preliminary plat. Request for the approval of the preliminary plat for Padera, subdividing approximately one hundred and sixty-point-four-zero acres into three hundred and fifty-five single-family lots and one hundred and fourteen core home lots, generally located the northwest corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road in the Planned Area Development PAD District. The applicant is Gary Myers, Standard Pacific Homes. Is there anything in addition to the, the rezoning that you'd like to present, Rick?
No, sir, I think that we covered it in the original presentation.
Is there any, anyone in the audience that would like to, to speak? Any questions of staff or the applicant from the Commission? Hearing none? Ask for Commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the case zero-six-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-five with the fifty-three stipulations.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is case zero-six-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-four, Wigwam Commons preliminary plat, request for the approval of the condominium preliminary plat for Wigwam Commons, subdividing four-point-nine-nine acres into four commercial condominium buildings, generally located at the northeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School within Phase Three B of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development PAD District. The applicant is Wigwam Investments LLC.
Mr. Gayle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. As previously mentioned, the subject property is located at the northeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School Road, in Phase Three B of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District. The property has a mixed-use commercial zone and is bordered by single-family residences to the south as well as to the east, and a vacant commercial zone property to the north. The applicant is requesting approval of the condominium preliminary plat to subdivide approximately five acres into four commercial condominium buildings. I'd like to now draw your attention to the condominium preliminary plat. And this condominium plats matches the site plan that staff has already administratively approved. The site plan contains four buildings, which range in size from six to eight hundred square feet to eighty-four hundred square feet, to the buildings line Wigwam Boulevard, and two have frontage on Indian School Road. The property will be served by two access points, one again here on Indian School Road and also one on Wigwam Boulevard. Site amenities include pedestrian, pedestrian plaza located at the intersection of Wigwam and Indian School Road, as well as a water wall feature located towards the center of the site. These are the building elevations for the property that staff has already administratively approved. The buildings will feature arcades that are located on the parking lot side of the buildings, and on the street side, it will feature steel awnings, and this will help contribute to forested architecture for the project. This concludes my presentation of the condominium preliminary plat for Wigwam Commons. I believe the applicant is here. I'm not sure if they have any type of presentation tonight. Staff is available for any questions they may have, as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, and either staff or the applicant can answer. I think my really only concern about this case is, is the light at Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School with the high school being right there and now more traffic. Do we have an idea as to when, and I'm not sure if I understood you correctly, if you had stated that, not this evening, but if the light had to be in place before condominiums came, or if that is going at the same time?
Chairman Horstman and members of the Commission, the development will be responsible to pay their proportionate cost of the traffic light located at that intersection. Our engineering department has not yet indicated whether that light is needed. My best guess is that they will probably require at some point down the road when this development comes in, at the northwest corner of Wigwam and Indian School Road, and that piece is owned commercial. We have not seen any development plans for that property to this point.
Other questions of staff? Did the applicant wish to address us?
Good, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Gelsner?
On the project that you just recently completed, I believe it's called the Indian Palms?
Yes.
Um, there was covered parking all along the residential border of the project since the, and you had two sides, two sides of residential, both north on the, on the east side and on the?
South side.
South side. And I'm looking at? And I'm looking at this, and you have residential, you border residential, and I'm questioning, am I, did I, did you leave out the covered parking?
That is correct. There will be no covered parking on this project.
Oh, okay. Why?
Just didn't feel it was necessary for this development.
I would strongly encourage it, and I will leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gelsner.
Because I think council will strongly encourage it also. I think it adds an amenity to your project. I think potential owners are going to want it, and I think you ought to offer it, whether you lease it out or not. I don't think, I think it's something that, you know, here in Arizona, I mean, now, I've lived here ten years, and covered parking is something that I never understood until I lived here for a long enough time.
Good customer service.
Other questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion if I could.
Mr. Gelsner.
I would like to approve the preliminary plat for the Wigwam Commons project, case number zero-five-five-hundred-zero-zero-zero-four, with the nineteen stipulations and an added recommendation to add covered parking on the east side parking of the project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Osborne. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next case is case zero-six-two-zero-zero-zero-one-three, Goodyear Plan Regional Center rezone. A request for approval to rezone approximately thirty acres, generally located south of McDowell Road, approximately six-hundred-ninety-seven feet west of Bullard Avenue, from the agricultural A G district to mixed-use commercial district, and the Goodyear Plan Regional Shopping Center, Planned Area Development P A D. The applicant is Ed Bull of Berchin, Crakiolo. Open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. This is a thirty-acre parcel that is located basically between Bullard and Bullard Avenue and Bullard Wash, north of Interstate Ten, and south of the existing Goodyear Plan Regional Center P A D. The request tonight is to rezone this parcel from agricultural to final Planned Area Development, and to amend the existing Goodyear Plan Regional Center P A D by including this parcel in the P A D as parcel fourteen. As part of the P A D, it will be assigned planned use designation of mixed-use commercial. It will be permitted to develop with the uses as permitted and established in the Goodyear Plan Regional Center. Staff is not aware of any specific use proposed for this parcel. The only development plans that we're aware of at this time is proposal for three freeway This right now is a conceptual proposal that staff has as part of a comprehensive sign package. The commission will see these freeway pylons later, with council's approval of our new freeway pylon ordinance now requiring a use permit for freeway pylons. This will be an item that will come back before the commission and require ultimate approval from the city council. West Cor's basic proposal at this time is for three freeway pylons, similar configuration as shown on the overhead. For this rezoning case, staff has followed our standard citizen review process. We've also advertised this item as required for a public hearing. To date, we've had no citizen inquiries or comments on this item. Staff is recommending approval, subject to twenty-seven stipulations. With two proposed changes, we're still having twenty-seven stipulations. However, we're proposing deleting stipulation number twelve and adding a new stipulation, which will be our new number twenty-seven. Basically, we're deleting a stipulation that, since the city will be providing sewer and water alliances, property, we do not need this stipulation to require, we do not want any sort of requirement to be seen as for the developer having to adhere to our master plan, since the city will be the one putting in infrastructure for this parcel. And then, in the new stipulation number twenty-seven, the existing Goodyear P R C allows car washes and drive-through restaurants as permitted uses, uses by right. The applicant has looked at this proposed language. It's my understanding that they're comfortable with this stipulation, which for only this thirty-acre parcel would make car washes and restaurants with drive-throughs, they would now require a use permit. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of the presentation. Staff is available for questions. Mr. Nathan Anderson, who is standing in for Mr. Ed Bull, and Mr. Ray Carter are also available tonight.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mr. Gelsner.
Steve, could you put the parcel fourteen area back on the overhead? If they're asking, when council passed the pylon ordinance, I believe there was a thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-foot separation between each pylon? And I'm looking at this piece of property, and I'm trying to figure out how they're going to get three pylons onto the property and still maintain the required distance, because that property sure doesn't look like it's twenty-six-hundred feet long along I-ten.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner.
I might be wrong.
From what I'm looking at here from the design guidelines from the ordinance established on June twelfth, it looks like we were looking at a minimum separation distance of one-half mile between freeway pylons located on the same side of the freeway. We're looking at a thousand feet of frontage on the freeway, thirty contiguous acres, and I think it was a commercial-industrial and mixed-use type zoning. Council, also as part of this ordinance, did have a provision to where they could modify certain standards if certain criteria were met, uniqueness of the site, characteristics of the sign or the development. So, there was some sort of flexibility in terms of the number of signs.
Let me tell the applicant, better have the name Goodyear prominently displayed on that pylon, otherwise, you're not getting all of them. Thank you.
Mr. Bay.
A question for staff, and thank you very much, Steve. I notice in stipulation twenty that it states the home builder shall provide a waiver agreement. I know that we're looking at a mixed-use property, but should we use the term home builder in this stipulation twenty, or should we change that to developer? And this clearly implies that we're going to have residence, that it is mixed-use property.
Where is stipulation twenty?
I'm sorry, I'm actually looking in their book. Sorry. In their book, they've got a twenty, and I guess this should be not to the staff, but to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, was that Tab Four of their development book?
Yeah, it is Tab Four.
This might clear it up, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay. And I can see probably where this ordinance, the applicant's intent by putting this in there was basically just, looked like, basically for your information, this was the prior zoning that rezoned the commercial component of the Goodyear P R C. They attached the ordinance for your review, for staff review. Those stipulations are what was attached to the rezoning that was approved back in two thousand.
There was residential components on the north side?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Steve, let me clarify. We're dealing with the rezoning, not with the sign package, not with the use permit for the pylon signs. That's more of a heads-up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Laura Townen.
I just thought, maybe it's just, I may not have been on the commission when this was decided, or I may just be kind of forgetting. I remember the app's on district, but parcel fourteen is kind of this odd-shaped parcel. What's on either side of it? You know, maybe you can help me out here a little. Yeah, there's like two, one on each side. It's kind of odd, so I just wonder what was there, or slated to be there, or anything.
West, Commissioner Laura Townen?
Yeah, well, both sides.
Both sides?
Yeah, because the parcel looks like we're talking about just kind of like this trapezoid-shaped thing. And I see, it looks like the rest is right next to it. Who owns that, or do we know what it's become yet? Has it come?
Well, to the west is property owned by Flood Control District.
Okay.
Bullard Wash runs through that parcel. To the east, private holder owns that. I personally do not know of any development plans.
Nothing yet. Oh, okay. I was just wondering to make sure it wasn't something I was missing out on before. Okay, thank you.
Steve, is there a similar irregular-shaped parcel on the west side of, what's this If you look at the Flood Control District parcel, there's a street there, or a drainage canal, and does the Flood Control District own a similar parcel on the west side of that?
Mr. Chairman, this is an exhibit from, that was provided from the city engineer for use for their improvement district. It looks like Flood Control District property is all through here.
Okay. Because the wash doesn't recognize that straight-line cutoff, they must own something to the west. And that's part of consideration for the city's and partners' development of Bullard Wash under I-ten and going south?
Chairman, commission members, I believe that there'll be some improvements to that portion of the wash through the west course, although I believe that's part of those improvements, because they're going to be doing work north of McDowell, so they have to be able to handle something between McDowell and the freeway. So, I believe that'll be some additional work that they'll be doing.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Is there anyone that would like to speak on this case? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff, planning commission consideration.
Mr. Bay. I would like to recommend approval of case zero-six-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-three, Goodyear Plan Regional City rezone, including stipulations as defined.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Case zero-six-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-eight, Villas at Palm Valley preliminary plat. The request for approval of the condominium preliminary plat for the Villas at Palm Valley, subdividing eight-point-nine-five acres into sixteen residential condominium buildings containing fifty-eight dwelling units, generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, a thousand feet north of Indian School Road, within Phase Five of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development P A D District. The applicant is the Villas at Palm Valley LLC. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As just mentioned, the subject nine-acre property is located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, approximately one-thousand feet north of Indian School Road, within Phase Five, Palm Valley Planned Area Development District. The site is zoned medium-density residential and is bordered by single-family residential low-density district to the north as well as to the east, a vacant commercial property to the south, and a construction site to the west known as the Sarnet Pebble Creek Apartments, and that's high-density multifamily residential. The applicant is requesting approval of a condominium preliminary plat to subdivide approximately nine acres into sixteen residential condominium buildings with fifty-eight dwelling units. And this is the Villas at Palm Valley preliminary condominium plat. Staff has already approved the site plan for this project. The site plan is made up of sixteen buildings. There will be three triplexes, three-duplex buildings, seven fourplexes, and three-fiveplexes. Thirty-six of the units will have a single-car garage, and twenty-two units will have a two-car garage. And there will be a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-two parking spaces on the site, including garage parking spaces, which will be sufficient for each unit to park two vehicles within the developments. The site will have a total of four acres of common open space, and open space amenities include a pool towards the interior of the site, as well as a putting green located at the northeast corner of the site. Site will be served by two access points on Pebble Creek Parkway, which will be gated with emergency access to those gates. And this concludes my presentation of the preliminary plats, condominium preliminary plat for the Villas at Palm Valley. Staff is in support of the application with the stipulations that are in the staff report. The applicant is here tonight, but he does not have any type of presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a question for the fire chief first, and then I have a question for the applicant. I see the two eggs, the two main and only entrances to this property come off Pebble Creek Parkway. Is that going to provide you, I mean, this is basically your miniature Owatuki. Obviously, you've approved it because we're seeing it here, but I guess I'm asking, I'm going to ask you on the record where you are on this one. Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, oftentimes, access is defined by the surrounding use, and particularly these types of parcels. And given our ability to influence design, there'd be straight streets, access every fifty feet, and certainly sprinkler system in every building, which fortunately will be required in this development based on the type of use. But I think you're on to something. It's just that oftentimes, the constraints of surrounding development, lot shape, size, they do influence that. So, we tend to have to focus on, in these types of developments, the regulation of parking and those types of things, which hinder our ability to get back into any part of the development. But from our perspective, this is acceptable.
Would it be a little easier to manage if there was a medium, and that the gates operated independently, so that if, for example, there was an automobile accident going in or coming out, that you would have sufficient access, particularly width, through a second driveline, if you will?
What we, Chairman Horstman, what we are trying to provide for with a minimum width in twenty feet, and what we're trying to provide for is... minimum widths in 20 feet, and what we're trying to provide for is the ability to have emergency apparatus, be able to get through in the event that there's an emergency apparatus in the lane opposing traffic. So essentially, it gives us the ability to move around other, other vehicles. What we find ourselves doing in, in many of these types of instances, and you'll see the same conversation in some of our residential, single family dwelling neighborhoods, where the builder is trying to achieve a entry effect. And so we, we work with them almost on a case by case basis, to make sure that we can meet our needs for emergency response, and, and wherever possible, try to help them achieve their objectives as well. So it's almost a case by case basis.
Can I make a follow-up?
Sure.
I have some, you know, I'm just kind of looking at the layout here, and, and I have some real concerns about this. Both entrances that come off Pebble Creek Parkway come into one, you know, into basically a T intersection, and if there's a wreck there or something, you cannot get into the rest of the, the complex. And so I guess my question for the developer is, is there any way that some type of, of emergency egress could be put on the southeast corner between the retention basin and, and basically house number D in the fiveplex, so that there could be some type of egress to the commercial parcel that's just to the south of it? Yeah, exactly where your pen is, chief. And I guess I'd like to ask the developer to comment on that, because, because I have some serious heartburn on this one. Where, hey, whoever's in charge of this one.
The emergency exit that we're talking about, the entry, is a way to come in and out, and the gate is supposed to, the fire is supposed to come out, but, so that's not, I'm sorry. Chairman, and Commissioner, my name's Ty Coughen, there for Act 10448, North 106 Place in Scottsdale. And the fault we've been, been discussing, the entryway is only one entry into the project itself. What we have on the north side is a fire exit itself.
But what I'm saying, what I, what I, my point is, if you follow the road from, let, let's say that this exit, the main entryway is blocked or something, you can't get through, or there's really an accident, as soon as you follow that road, if there's an accident at that T intersection, you, you can't get into, you can't get in and out of the parcel. There's no alternative route, right where you're, right where the pencil point is. And so, you know, so I'm saying, I'm suggesting that there be some type of cross, cross exit at that south of this corner, right, right above the word where it says site data. So that, that, that is your choke point on your circulation diagram. You know, everybody, everybody has to go through that point to get in or out. And, and so if you have some, if you move right exactly there and just, if you had some type of, you know, cross access into the commercial site below, you know, to the south of it, I think I would feel more comfortable voting in favor of this. And since the master developer's here, I guess I'd ask him to address his concerns to that.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, if I may, I'd like to speak a moment about the circulation within the site, and how it interacts with Pebble Creek Parkway. When the site plan originally came through, there was no access coming around the south end of the site, or actually, rather, this point right here, or this section, there was no access around the south end. And planning has worked extensively with fire and engineering to make sure that this complies with their requirements and the regulations. And they had, the architect of this project add an accessway right here below these buildings on the south end of the site to improve circulation within the developments. The applicant, as well as this driveway location, the applicant has also increased turning radii within development to meet the regulations. So they've done everything that fire and engineering has asked, and fire and engineering has approved the site plan in this manner.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, I'm not a professional engineer, but I see, I see, you have an X, you know, in this plan where everything, everybody has to go through that X. And if you have an emergency or a fire on, at that point, right, right where the, the north entrance comes in, curves around, and meets up with the main access road, you have an X there. And, and there's no way around that. And, and if, unless there's some kind of cross access to the south, I'm gonna vote against it.
I thought he said this was only a fire exit, not an egress.
What I'm saying is you come through here, and if, if there's an accident right here, you can't get into the rest of the, of the parcels.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Laura Towne, and, and Mr. Ellingson.
I have a, a comment, and Commissioner Osborne makes me kind of aware of this now, looking for the, the playground and all the, all the amenities appear to be, she said this earlier, and I was looking at this, and it's like, well, there's a lot of passive open space, but all, like, it looks like there's only like one playground, right by the pool, and that's kind of it. There's nothing in any of the other open space areas, so, you know, I don't know if you'd be amenable to adding something in some of those areas to kind of balance it out a little bit for the people on that side of your complex.
And are they covered tot lots?
Yes, are they covered?
The other, if that's not.
It's 105 out there, 10 out there today, so, is it gonna be covered? Because I see one tot lot, and I could be missing it, you know? But I only see one by the pool. I don't see, like, the other development saw had the barbecue pits, and the ramadas, and some other.
Yes, the active open space certainly does include the pool, the tot lot, and it is covered, yes.
Any other tot lots that you would add, maybe for the people over here, who, you know?
I don't, I don't believe the areas that are shown in green are retention areas. This tot lot area that we have here now actually, you know, is quite large, and I think it's probably sufficient for this particular size with two units.
And it is covered?
Yes, it is.
No metal slides?
No.
That's better, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. This is a, members of the commission, this is an area, or rather, color exhibit of the developments. And as I was mentioning before, to achieve better circulation throughout the developments, fire had asked the applicants to add a travel or drive aisle in this location, which they've done. You can't see it on this plan, but it was inserted on the approved site plan, this location here.
But that's not what Mr. Gelsner's getting at. Circulation is one thing, it's getting in and out of that one area is what he's talking about. I mean, I know what are the odds, but, you know, it's always.
We've, we've had, we've had projects, single family projects, where we've actually constructed a below surface roadway across golf course fairway to, to achieve access in, in Australia Mountain Ranch to provide a second access. Mr. Ellingson, did you want to offer a comment?
Chairman, members of the commission, Jay Ellingson. I can tell you that this applicant has worked a long time to try to meet all the criteria. There's 56 units, which is, we have to keep that in mind in terms of the total activity within this particular project. If you look at the circulation, the other, the other access point to the north on Pebble Creek is really to meet a second entry. Yes, there is a possibility, although I would say it's remote, that there could be an accident right at that interchange, or the intersection coming in, and the, the other one that comes in from a 90, but you can see that it opens up too, into a larger area in all the roadways. These are private roadways, it opens up to give a, a better, larger intersection, if you will. So I, I think that 56 units, the way it's laid out, does work, and has been reviewed by engineering and also fire and public safety, to make sure that it meets the criteria. When we reviewed it, we looked at it that, that way. I guess we could look at all considerations. In a perfect world, we would already have and know what the site plan was to the commercial property. I don't know what that is yet. You know, to say that there's an access point there, it's premature to know what that would actually be going into, in terms of the commercial side to the south. So I, I, in a, in a perfect world, I would know that, but I don't know that until there's some site plan generated for that property. And so independently, this particular developer is trying to do the best they can in terms of mitigating all circumstances for a project that works. It could have had more density, it does not. It's a nice project, we, we reviewed what they build in Fountain Hill Hills, and they build a good project. So I'm not sure it answers your question, but I don't know how else to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Ellingson. Other questions or comments?
I have one other question, and that's regarding parking. I noticed that it was stated that there's at least two parking spots per household, but there's adequate other parking, like along sidewalks, or, I mean, is there adequate parking for guests coming to this area?
Chairman Horstman, members of the commission, staff has worked with the applicant to ensure that the parking requirements are met for the site, and this does include guest parking requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I share Mr. Gelsner's concern. I appreciate the fire chief being here this evening and making his assertions. I'm going to err on the side of going with the experts on this particular situation. However, I, I share Mr. Gelsner's concern, and would like the record to show that this is something that the city council may want to look at as they deliberate regarding this project, and, and they're convinced that public safety is served, and so be it. But I do, I do recognize and have, have some concern, but at, at this point, I'll go with the experts and, and support the, the project. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this project?
Just, just one comment, I think it's interesting that everyone's focusing on what would happen within the site. Looking at the site plan, it looks like there's a median that actually prevents any left turn access to that site of either one of those, any one of those entries or egress ways. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about the way that, that median's designed, that would provide access, because it would require someone to do a U-turn, get back to the facility, and that could even include a police and fire. So I, I would ask staff to take a closer look at the median design and allow for access, a left turn access into that facility, not just for access into the facility, but so that when people decide to egress that facility, they don't have to go up to Charles Road and make a U-turn and come back around, or whatever other option they have. So that's my, that would be my only concern about this site plan. I think it's a good project, I like it, and I'll be supporting it.
Other questions or comments? If there are none, I will entertain a motion from the commission.
Chairman Horstman.
Mr. Bay.
I would like to make a motion to approve case 06-05-00008, Villas at Palm Valley Preliminary Platte, with all the stipulations as provided, and would ask for strong recommendation for staff to take a closer look at the egress egress abilities for this particular site.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Or reluctant, nay.
Thank you, Mr. Gelsner. Last case on the agenda is case 06-000-00001, text amendment for minor land division slash lot splits, a request for the approval of an amendment to the code of the city of Goodyear, amending Article 15 subdivision regulations, adding Section 15-9, minor land division slash lot splits, to establish a procedure for reviewing minor land division and lot splits, and to authorize administrative approval of certain types of minor land divisions and lot splits. The applicant is the city of Goodyear. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Horstman, members of the commission. The city is empowered by state statute to regulate land splits within its corporate boundaries, and the majority of municipalities in the Phoenix metropolitan area are currently utilizing minor land division ordinances with, that are associated with their municipality's subdivision regulations. Staff has surveyed the subdivision organizations, excuse me, the subdivision regulations of the majority of municipalities in the valley, and has drafted a proposed amendment to the Goodyear City Code. And the, the main objective was to establish a review and approval process for minor land divisions, in, in an effort to establish a review and, and an approval process for minor land divisions, lot splits, and lot line adjustments, or lot, or lot consolidations in applied subdivision. Currently, Chapter 15 of the city code, which is the chapter on subdivision regulations, does not provide, it does not provide for an efficient method to review and approve minor land divisions, lot splits, or boundary adjustments. So this, this proposal would propose to create an administrative review and approval process for minor land divisions. Essentially, this will, this administrative process will save a lot of time processing these applications, and bringing these applications to the Planning Commission and City Council for minor, for minor issues. Essentially, the proposed minor land division ordinance defines what a minor land division is, it defines what a land split or a lot line adjustment is, and it would then outline the process whereby an application is prepared, and then reviewed by staff, and then approved by city of Goodyear staff. The, the process would include a pre-application meeting with staff preceding the submittal, and then the application would be made by the subdivider. The proposed ordinance would outline, it outlines the design standards and requirements. It includes the potential improvements that may be required by the city, and it includes detailed application submittal requirements. And essentially, it provides staff with the ability to administratively review and approve these applications. If I could refer to an exhibit in the overhead, thank you, Eddie. I want to talk about three basic benefits that the, that the city and the development community will, will achieve by the approval of this city code update. The first is the, the minor land division ordinance will allow staff to administratively review and approve applications for dividing land into two or three parts, and I would note that if land is proposed to be divided into four parts, a subdivision plat would be required. I'll refer to this exhibit. This is an area in the city of Goodyear. What I wanted to show you here is you can see how, this is an area that does not have a subdivision, but you can see how the lot splitting has been occurring. You can see two large pieces of land here, and then you can see as the lots are being split over time, this, this lot here is approximately one acre in size. So, you can see over time, these splits are taking place, and the city is, is not reviewing these lot split events. Essentially, the, the intent of this is to prevent wildcat subdivisions. It's going to enable staff to make sure that the resulting lots will have the minimum zoning requirements. They will have legal and physical access to every lot that is proposed to be created, and each lot or parcel will have property utility easements set aside for each individual lot or parcel. And as I mentioned, city staff does not have the authority currently to process minor land divisions. Applicants in this case may simply have their land surveyed and, and split, and they can take that to the county recorder and have that recorded. And obviously, the minor land division ordinance would make, make certain that any proposal would be in accordance with city standards. The second benefit would be that the minor land division ordinance would allow staff to administratively review and approve applications for further dividing land when it's part of a recorded subdivision plat. So, again, this is, this is if the parcel is part of an approved recorded subdivision plat. Rather than going through a lengthy public process, staff would be able to administratively review and approve, and I wanted to show you an example. This, this is a, an exhibit of the Palm Valley Cornerstone site plan, and pad nine here, the purchaser of this lot, the orange, the orange border shows the lot boundaries. The purchaser of this lot would like to further subdivide this property. What, what they would like to do is, this master site plan shows an eight thousand square foot building. What they would like to do is build two buildings on the lot with two smaller buildings on the lot, rather than just having one, there would be actual, two actual buildings there. And this is an example of how the, the developer, in a, in a relatively minor situation like this, where they could apply for a minor land division, and staff could administratively review and make sure that the, the new lot would have legal access, and there would be no utility issues, and that sort of a application could be reviewed and approved administratively. The third benefit that the city and the development community would, would see is that the ordinance would allow staff to administratively review and approve lot line adjustments and lot consolidations in an approved subdivision. And going back to this exhibit on Perimeter West, Mr. Ellingson had, had noted that he envisions that this, these four lots will actually be consolidated into one. And so, if this was an approved subdivision plat, staff would be able to administratively consolidate those lots, or if during the development process, a lot line needed to be adjusted in a minor way, staff could admin, could do that administratively. Attached to your staff report is a exhibit showing fees. Actually, there was a, there was a draft resolution attached to your staff report that will go to the city council, and it has a proposed fee in the amount of five hundred dollars per application for a minor land division. Staff typically charges user fees for various development-related applications. Since it's the city's policy, the development pays its own way, and if user fees are not collected, the services would need to be funded by the general fund revenues. Staff has surveyed the subdivision ordinances of the majority of valley municipalities and recorded the amount that they are charging for the minor land division fee, and staff would propose a fee of five hundred dollars per application. Staff wishes to keep the fee somewhat minimal in order to encourage the use of the process. If, if the fee is excessive, the public may avoid using this process. If I could, I apologize, there are two changes to the actual minor land division ordinance that I will walk you through. If you have the, the attachment that has the Article fifteen dash nine minor land divisions in your packet, I, I will try to briefly explain the two changes. Under section fifteen dash nine dash one applicability, we would propose that subsection C be revised as follows, and I'll read the way that it should be worded. Essentially, we will delete a portion of the sentence. It should state that the division of improved or unimproved land or lands for the purchase, for the purpose of financing, sale, or lease, whether immediate or future, when the boundaries of such property have been fixed by a recorded subdivision plat, and when a new street is not involved. The majority of municipalities in the valley allow one split to happen, so essentially, referring back to the exhibit I showed you before in Palm Valley Cornerstone, the majority of cities would allow a developer to go ahead and split a lot in a recorded subdivision, and they would not require a minor land division review. Staff recommends that we would review all divisions in any subdivision plat. We would review any proposal to ensure that adequate utilities and legal access is going to be guaranteed to the new lots. And then also, there's a proposed change to section D, and we would insert three words. It would read as follows, lot line adjustments and lot consolidations in a flatted subdivision. To be clear, that lot consolidations would also be permitted under this minor land division application. So, in conclusion, the minor land division process, it's intended to streamline and facilitate the review of minor land divisions, and determine that the resulting lots and parcels are going to have the, they're going to provide for the minimum applicable zoning requirements, they're going to have legal and physical access to the lots being created, and they will have proper utility easements set aside on each lot or parcel. This concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or stand?
I have a quick question. Is, would this ordinance be only applicable in incorporated areas of the city, or would it be applicable to all areas within our planning boundary?
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, it would be applicable to all areas in the city of Goodyear. The unincorporated county areas would, would fall under the jurisdiction of the American County requirements. Thank you.
Chairman Horseman?
Mr. Bay. Thank you for the presentation, and it's good to know that you, you want to assure that we have egress, ingress, and utility access. I guess my question is, I didn't really quite see that written out into the charter. I don't know if you, is that just an implied benefit, or should that be stated? That any new, any parcel split or a merger has to provide, that, that parcel of land has to have ingress, egress, and utility access? Is that stated anywhere currently?
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Bay, the subdivision regulations that the city has, chapter fifteen of the city code, are not very clear, and they're outdated. The definitions are outdated, and some of the definitions don't contain enough information. That, that information is not clear anywhere in the city code.
Okay.
And currently, as I mentioned previously, areas that aren't part of subdivisions, what's happened in the past is that individuals would just go ahead, have their property surveyed, they would just go ahead and go to the county and have it recorded, and they may not know that they aren't in compliance with city standards. What, what this is trying to do is, we have people constantly coming into the city and asking, you know, is there anything I need to do? I want to split my property. And at this time, all we can tell them is that Goodyear does not have a minor land division ordinance. Unless you want to split it into four parts, then we would require a subdivision.
I guess, you know, I, I'm in agreement with this. I'm, I'm not saying that this isn't a good thing. I'm, I'm simply advocating that we state clearly that any, any splits or mergers of parcels have to provide ingress and egress and utility access before any of those parcels get approved. So, I, I don't know where you would put that in the city code, but I think it needs to be clearly stated, not only as a benefit, but a requirement, so.
On page three, section one fifty nine, one fif, section fifteen dash nine dash four, item E, any newly created lots shall have adequate access to all utilities necessary and appropriate for the development. On the property to be divided as determined by the community development director or as designees, city engineer or designees. So, there's the, the utility side of the discussion.
D is the roads right above.
And D is the public road access.
Okay, and this is, but see, we were talking about fifteen nine one, so.
Fifteen nine four is where that, those two paragraphs are.
Okay, so we've covered that in fifteen nine four. Okay, well, then that's, that's fine. Now, the other, other question I had was, does this still require then that, that, that the applicant then has to have this minor amendment change recorded with the county recorder as well? So, this is a process prior to that? How's that work?
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Bay, the minor land division ordinance would walk through the entire process, and the city of Goodyear would take care of the recording process for the applicant. That's typically what we do right now when a subdivision is approved, we make sure the signatures are on the plat, and that plat is taken to the county and properly recorded.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Brett.
Brett, is the, the five hundred dollar fee, is that a cost-based fee, or is it a, an effort to reflect a fee which is reasonable in terms of what other cities are charging, and again, as you stated, did not want to make that a, an obstacle, therefore, people avoided the process because it was too much?
Chairman Horseman, members of the commission, both of your answers, and any additional, I would defer to Harvey for any additional information, but both of your answers was staff's reasoning on, on the amount. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we did not do an actual study to determine how long it takes to review a plat. It was primarily, this is a benefit. I think it will save time to the development community and individuals that want to do minor land subdivisions and lot splits, and it's a benefit to the city, too. There's some public benefit to this, so it's not entirely, shouldn't be totally user-driven in that standpoint, because the public is served by us having recorded plats and knowing where these lots are, and it helps the city, too. So, yeah, so we kept the fee purposely low, we surveyed the other communities, and I think we're somewhat in the ballpark.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or?
And we can assume that Mace is going to raise their fee anyways, so ours are probably going to be lower.
Oh, yeah. I guess so. Hearing no questions, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this ordinance, proposed ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve case zero six zero zero zero, zero 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 one, text amendment, minor land division slash lot splits.
I have a recommendation to approve as a motion.
Second.
A second for Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion?
Chairman Horseman, just, just one question. We have this resolution that talks about the fee itself. Is that somehow incorporated into this, or how does this work?
Chairman Horseman, members of the commission, the resolution was included as an attachment for your information to see what the council is going to receive when they receive your recommendation along with the minor land division ordinance.
I agree. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Staff communications.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Member, we advertised for the fighting manager position yesterday, I believe, or today, or maybe today, so that's, that's on the streets. The city center specific area plan received a schedule from our consultant, HTR. We're looking at tentatively having a next technical advisory committee meeting on July sixth. We'll distribute the plan hopefully by the end of the first of July to the commission council, and looking at a public hearing with the, with the commission tentatively for the next commission meeting in July, and hopefully after the council's recess at the end of August, they can take a, a look at the plan and move that forward. So, just want to give you a heads up that that's moving forward. I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
On that point, could you ask the secretary to the commission to notify us by email when that tech meeting is actually posted? Because I'll forget.
You can tentatively write down July sixth. I think that, I hope that's a good date. We're planning on that date, but I will confirm that.
Ms. Osborn?
Harvey, something came up this evening that I foresee in the future, and I'd like it to be checked out, and that's regarding the Goodyear design guidelines and the industrial sites. I mean, that was a really large case that Suncor brought this evening, and I don't know that our design guidelines is giving enough things to be looked at for a developer to add to, because you're not, you're not wanting us to see anymore. We're, we're allowing you to take care of it, if I understand it correctly, which is, which is fine, but I think that maybe it might need to be looked at to have some added features to the design guidelines, because it's kind of, there's not a lot to it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Osborn, we do have, we do have design guidelines for industrial buildings within our code, and I believe it was one of our, the previous zoning case with Suncor, we did provide some allowance on the requirement of four-sided architecture. When we get into, you know, close to a half a million square foot industrial building, it's going to be very difficult cost-wise and design-wise to make that same requirement that we have for, you know, your typical commercial pad, to apply that to four-sided architecture to.
Well, I understand that.
Large industrial buildings, so we, we have, we have applied different standards to industrial buildings. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but we do.
No, I, I just felt that because we haven't had very many of these cases at all, that just time hasn't needed it, and so I'm just. just time hasn't needed it. And so, I'm just stating that possibly this is something that as you start going through some of these site plans, you're going to see yourself that, you know what, this needs to be added to those Design Guidelines. So, you're not telling every developer over and over again that that needs to be in there, and it's not stated. So, I'm just asking that keep your mind open about reviewing of the Design Guidelines. And that's just a comment.
Okay. Any other business before the commission? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.